Not sure if there is anybody, you can let me know now. If not, at this moment, I will move to the pledge allegiance. City manager Enrique, would you mind giving us a pledge of allegiance?
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, can we ask everyone to mute themselves if it's not Enrique, of course, because we're hearing some breathing or voicing right now. Sorry.
Yes, of course. So if anybody's not speaking at this time, it would be beneficial for you to mute yourself.
All right, everyone, please. Direct your sight to the mayor's screen there and look at the flag. Place your hand over your heart, your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Alejandro Avila here. Councilmember Monica Garcia here. Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
President.
Mayor pro temp Daniel Damian.
Here.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here.
And city treasurer Marie Contreras. She's here. I think she muted her.
Yeah, I think she muted her, but she's definitely here. So thank you for that, city clerk. City attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Here.
There she is.
I'm muted.
Sorry, sorry, sorry about that, Mayor. Yes, the city council did consider multiple items in closed session. Received direction, but no final action was taken. So there is no reportable action, and that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you for that.
So our closed session, our closed session did end, so we will not be going back into closed session.
Correct. So thank you for that, city attorney. So at this moment, we do move to proclamations, commendations, and presentations, and we do have our oath of office for two of our commissioners. And I have them here with me today. So I will do that. We have Estela Herrera for the Housing Commission, for the Housing Commission, and Laura Franklin as well. So at this moment, I will ask them to join me up here so that they are within you. And I will administer the oath, so please raise your hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Laura Franklin.
I, Estela Herrera.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
And I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
And I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
And now that we have our commissioners up here, I do want to present our Black History Month proclamation to Laura Franklin. But before I do that, I'm going to ask you to sign right here. And then we have our proclamation for National Black History Month. And I will read it out. And so National Black History Month, February 2022. Whereas February is the month to reflect on the heroes who preserve, who persevere in the face of unconscionable discrimination, racism, and prejudices. And whereas Black History Month seeks to recenter the efforts of African Americans to tell a fuller story of America and make all Americans aware of the struggle for freedom and equal opportunity. And whereas this is a time to celebrate the many achievements of blacks in every field, from science, politics, and religion, it also offers all Americans an occasion to gain a fuller perspective of the contributions of black Americans to our nation. And whereas the American experience and character can never be fully grasped until the knowledge of black history assumes its rightful place in our schools, colleges, and universities. And whereas this Black History Month, let us draw inspiration and courage from those that came before us as we continue to work towards full equality, democracy, and constitutional rights for all Americans regardless of race or color. Now, therefore, I, Emmanuel J. Estrada, Mayor of the City of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor pro temp Daniel Damian, council members Alejandro Avila, Monica Garcia, Paul C. Hernandez, city treasurer Maria E. Contreras, and city clerk Marlene Garcia, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as National Black History Month and urge our community to recognize and observe this month and work together to bring awareness and acknowledge the importance of all African American citizens throughout the city of Baldwin Park, the state, and our nation. And I wanted to present this to our Commissioner Franklin. And I wanted to do so because I read your application when you applied for commissioner.
Oh, wow.
And you made it one of your goals. To, and I'll just read it out, says bring a fresh perspective on housing in the San Diego Valley, particularly to Baldwin Park as it pertains to the African Americans in the city. And you touched heavily on making sure that African Americans were represented well throughout our city. And I thought that was one of the most important reasons to make sure that you wanted to be a commissioner. And thank you. And thank you for taking a part in the changes that your city will see in the future.
Thank you so much.
And then I believe we now have a presentation from, for Project Home Key, for Project Home Key in Baldwin Park by Alyssa McCormick, the director of PHK Baldwin Park.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Wonderful. Hi. Thank you so much for having me. I'm really looking forward to being able to talk a little bit more about the program. And if I can go to our first slide, please. So Project Home Key, or as we call it PHK, is an interim housing program. There are many sites, but six sites are operated by the Department of Health Services throughout Los Angeles County. And one of the sites, as you know, is here in Baldwin Park. The, um, this started from the Project Room Key program that began a couple of years ago. And the goal was to get COVID vulnerable folks experiencing homelessness off the streets and into a safe environment. And the extension of that, as COVID has continued to impact us, is the Project Home Key. We are interim housing, so our clients will stay with us until they find permanent housing. PHK provides a safe, supportive, and structured living environment for folks who are coming off the street. We have some residents who have been homeless for a month. We have some residents who've been homeless for decades. And we provide the opportunity for these folks to come indoors, build independent living skills, and the goal, of course, is to successfully transition to permanent housing. Next slide, please. So the Project Home Key Baldwin Park officially opened last year on January 11th. So we just had our one-year anniversary. We are at the site of the motel, the former Motel 6 at Puente and Garvey Streets. I think most of you know that's quite visible right by the 10 freeway. We have 75 rooms, 71 are for residents. We do allow couples. We also allow service and emotional support animals. And that's been, um, traditional shelters don't allow, couples do not allow service animals, and that's been a huge barrier in the past. So we're very pleased to be able to offer that for many folks will not leave their animals behind. We understand that, and so they come indoors with their owners. We have a lot of different programs. I did want to highlight our community garden. And you see it there in the picture. It's very small, but we are starting small and growing bigger, growing vegetables, herbs, and flowers. We're hoping to, and we're continuing to enhance the property as we go along. The facility is scheduled to be converted into permanent supportive housing sometime this year. The new estate I have from the Department of Health Services is June. We will close down for renovations, and at some point, the site will open back up as a permanent supportive housing site. Next slide, please. Our operations, uh, we have round-the-clock security. We offer three meals a day to clients. We have housekeeping services. We have a laundry room. We have cable TV and Wi-Fi. We have all the amenities that folks need and want here. Uh, we do maintain a set of rules and protocols for our residents so that we establish a safe, comfortable living environment that is also structured in that in turn allows folks to move on into permanent supportive housing. Having that structure in place. Residents complete an intake when, as soon as they arrive. This includes an assessment of needs, um, consents for services. And that's at the time that we establish a treatment plan for each client so that we know what their goals are and we can help them meet their goals. Residents are asked to meet with their case manager at least once per week. And all residents are to be working towards the attainment of permanent housing. That is the mandate from the Department of Health Service. So this is a pit stop on the way to permanent supportive housing for our clients. We do wellness checks at individual rooms throughout the day. And so we are, the safety and health and security of our residents and the surrounding sites is a priority for us. So we have a lot of interface with our clients here. Next slide, please. Safety and security. We have onsite security staff 24 hours a day. We also have video cameras around the facility so we can get a good look of folks who are here, people coming onto the facility. We do have a number of site policies that are designed to keep this a nice, quiet, safe, and secure environment. No alcohol, substances, weapons of any kind are allowed on the premises. We do search clients every single time they come in from the outside. And any contraband is removed at that time. We have a 10:00 PM curfew, and we have quiet hours between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. We do sometimes have folks who, this is not a great fit for them. Maybe it's too structured. Maybe they need a higher level of support. So we do have the ability to transfer to other facilities or programs within our larger Housing for Health program that's run by DHS if this is not a location that meets their needs. Next slide, please. We do have case managers. Each client is assigned a case manager upon entry. We have a nursing staff onsite seven days a week, so we support the client's health. Our clientele skews older, so we do have, uh, our oldest client is 85. Our youngest client is 23. So you can see we have a wide range. However, the average or the median age is about 58. So our clients do have chronic health issues, so we're here to support our clients getting linked to services. We do have a dedicated mental health clinician and a substance use counselor for support in those areas. We also have residential aides who are on staff 24 hours a day. They perform their wellness checks. They serve the meals, and they're a good source of support for our residents. We do have onsite housekeeping and a maintenance staff that we maintain from when it was a Motel 6. So these folks have been here for a while, and we're really lucky to be able to have them stay on with us because they know the site in and out. And so they help us manage the rooms and grounds. Uh, next slide, please. Services. So our case managers, it's a, it's a full-service, wraparound services, I think you could call it. Our case manager support basically with whatever the residents need. It may be helping them get IDs and social security cards. It may be connection to mental health. You know, SUD providers, transportation like bus passes, assistance with money management, opening a bank account, connection to educational support or job resources. And then just the interpersonal skills and that are going to keep them in good stead when they move on to permanent housing. We also have the nursing team. We are not a medical facility per se, but we do offer medication, education, first aid, blood pressure checks, COVID testing. We have the ability to COVID test at any time onsite here, which is very helpful these days. A lot of what the nursing team also does is to help the clients navigate the sometimes very confusing world of the medical system. Our mental health clinician and substance use counselor provide one-on-one and group counseling here onsite as well as linking to outside services as needed. And now that almost all of our clients are in the process of attaining permanent housing through Section 8 resources, we are very busy working with outside case managers to help them move through that process as soon, as quickly and efficiently as possible. Next slide, please. And we were really very invested in collaborating with the community. We, at least, I would say about twice a week, we have folks coming in from off the street looking for resources. They are generally speaking from the immediate area. And some of them are not without a permanent residence right now, but they're facing homelessness. Some are already on the street. And so we've, I do a lot of talking to those folks and offering suggestions, talking about the housing process, talking about resources in the area. And so education and sometimes, you know, directly intervening on their behalf simply because when the resources are not forthcoming soon enough, we just sort of take it upon ourselves to help folks find a connection either to an outreach team, a street outreach team, or connection to other resources that can help them. We've had a couple of cases where, um, we've had locals who were in need and we really didn't want to wait for, uh, somebody to give them a call, you know, and so we just, we facilitated the transfer into our facility ourselves. And so right now, we do have a pregnant woman. She's due on March 14th. And we have our oldest resident. She's a local woman. She's 85 years old. And she was living in her car. But now we're happy that she's with us and, you know, safe and sound and off of the streets. And that, that is my presentation, but I am certainly happy to answer any and all questions that you have.
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Oh, thank you. Thank you again, Alyssa. I really appreciate the presentation and being a collaborative effort, you know, with our staff and just more importantly, being a good community partner. The question I have is, have you been successful in placing some of your guests into our city for permanent homes?
Not yet. Um, we have, we have about eight clients who've been permanently housed so far. But right now, we, most of our clients are connected to the EHEV, the Emergency Housing Voucher. And because so many of those vouchers went out, or the, the applications for the vouchers went out at once, there's a little bit of a bottleneck in, at the housing authorities, either the Hackla or the county. And so we do have clients who, we do have some local clients. They grew up in this area. They want to stay in this area, so they are looking in this area. But a lot of our clients are waiting until they actually get that voucher in hand. And so we will have folks who will stay in town. And then we have folks who are from areas throughout LA County, and they're probably going to want to go back to the areas that they're, you know, they have connections to.
No, and I can understand and respect that. For those that want to continue to stay at Baldwin Park, Ben, I'll just ask if there's a way of, I'm not sure of the logistics, but if there's a way of us providing a stopgap measure to help them, you know, those that, you know, and more importantly, if there's a facility or a rental apartment or duplex or whatever here in Baldwin Park that we could perhaps explore what that look, what that may look like for those that want to, you know, continue to be, you know, our residents, whether they've been in the past or they wish to continue. And again, basically, as Alyssa mentioned, you know, they're waiting for that voucher. But if there's a way for us to perhaps expedite that on our side through our own mechanisms, let's please explore that if possible.
Yes, thank you, council member. Yes, we, we have emergency housing vouchers. We have regular Section 8 housing vouchers. So, um, Alyssa, Alyssa, we can, we, you know, we can talk about that. And in the case that someone wants to stay local, you can refer them to us and we will work with them directly.
Oh, that'd be wonderful. Yeah, we, we do have a number of residents who, when they first came to us, you know, this was not their home territory. But they, having been here a year now, they don't want to leave. They love Baldwin Park. Um, you know, the convenience of everything that's here. I just think a lot of folks are already feeling like they're residents. And so there, there are a number, a small number of clients who may not have started out here, but would really like to stay. So that's very much appreciated.
Thank you. No questions, Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Alyssa, thank you for the presentation. And it's great to see all those wraparound services that have been provided through this project, much-needed services. So thank you. My question is, the last time that we connected with, I think it was Project Room Key at that time. I asked the question, how many resident, well, how many individuals from Baldwin Park were being housed? And the answer at that time was none. So I know that there was, with the second phase of the project, there was going to be a greater emphasis on outreach to individuals in Baldwin Park. And I think it's only fair that, um, there are 70 units, and they're made available to the region. But, you know, to also house those in Baldwin Park. So I wanted to ask you, has that number changed?
Yes. And, and in fact, I know, I believe that one of the things we talked about was if you, anybody on the council or anybody that was interested, that reached out to you, could connect with us, and we would do our best to keep them local. We ourselves don't do outreach. We just don't have the capability to do that. There are apparently outreach teams in the area, but I think they're probably spread pretty thin. Because when I've tried to get outreach services to the folks that come in to our facility, it's, it's been very challenging. That's why we've, in a couple of cases that I mentioned, we've just done it ourselves because we don't want to wait for an outreach team or another individual to try and match these clients, these local clients to the facility. So it's always been our goal to have as many local clients as possible. So, um, we do actually now, I believe there are three. There's a couple. There's our gal who is the pregnant gal I talked about. And then our oldest client are from the area. And I'm working with a gentleman now, just happened to come in last week. He just became, he lost his home last week. So I'm working with him to get him resources. I don't have the capability, generally speaking. I have to work with DHS to actually get folks placed. We, uh, we can make the referrals, but it's ultimately up to DHS. But if we say this person is local, we have an open room, we would like them to stay there, then that has, that's gone through. That's been able to go through, you know, go through. And so we have been able to advocate for these folks, and I'd love to advocate for more.
Well, thank you. And I know that we have our Director of Recreation and Community Services, Manuel Carillo, who, we, in the past, we've done outreach and have made contact. And I think that in that last call, we were gonna try to, you know, just partner on some outreach so that our residents or the individuals in our community could really benefit from this service if they need it. And there is a need, so we'd like to see how we can further that partnership. And I think that Manuel Carillo is ready to speak on that.
Yes, Alyssa, nice to formally meet you. And yes, we would definitely love to collaborate with your agency. I'm very familiar with it. So I will connect with you this week, if not first thing next week, and see how we could work a little bit closer.
Wonderful. That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Is there any more? Oh, yes, go ahead, Enrique.
Mayor, thank you. Alyssa, Enrique, city manager. You covered the, sort of the in and out security checks that you do, contraband, weapons, and things like that. What about when you vet the clients as they're going to be admitted to the facility for the first time? Is there such thing as a background that you do? And if it's anything confidential, please just say so. But do you do any kind of background on, when you first admit clients? Or clients who are applying to be admitted or refer to be admitted?
So the referrals come from a variety of sources. The referrals are given to us by the Department of Health Services. Do they do background checks? No. We do know a certain amount about the clients. We don't have, they, they come to us. Well, let me, let me go back. They come to us from a couple of different sources. Some come to us from county hospitals. Some come to us directly from homeless outreach teams. Some come to us from other shelters or interim housing facilities. And those are the main locations where we're, we're getting clients from. So they, when they refer it in, we do get some information about them. But we may not have a full picture. However, and that's why we, during the intake is the first time that we're starting to get to know the client. We do our best to interact with them as much as possible. That's why we have the case managers meeting with them weekly. Basically, we live with them. So I will say we get to know them pretty quickly. And that is the most effective way for us to see whether or not this is a good fit for them. For example, we may have somebody who has more significant mental health needs. And in that case, we can refer them to another facility that specializes in higher level of mental health support. But that's something that we do on the ground here.
Thank you. I just have a question, Mayor. Thank you, Alyssa. I just have a question. Are any of these individuals court-appointed?
No.
No. Thank you.
Thank you. And just double check. I don't know if any other, uh, council members or staff have any questions or concerns. Not, Alyssa, I want to thank you for taking the time to present to the council. I know we've all been eager to learn about this, and I, you know, it's a, it's a great program. It looks like you guys are doing really good things, especially the wraparound services. We know that it just goes beyond housing, right? And we need to offer people services and help them work on themselves to get them on to, to a better path. And I want to congratulate you because 90% is a really good rate of residents getting ready to want to permanent housing. So I think that's really good. And I, and I think it was important for all of us to see those statistics. So thank you for being with us today.
They are, sorry, I didn't speak up earlier.
Oh, yes, go ahead, council member.
Thank you, Alyssa, for, for the presentation. It's very important, like the mayor said, to hear those percentages from you. Is there any way we could visit the facility? I haven't had a chance to visit the facility and see the work that they've done.
Absolutely. In fact, you, I was just gonna say, as my closing piece, if you want to come, we've done tours for a variety of city councils and, and other folks. We, I like giving tours. So you are, you are more than welcome.
Okay, I'll ask Enrique if it's okay with you, Enrique, so we can set up a tour to go look at the facility and meet some of the residents there. That, that would be really nice. Thank you, Ben, for getting them here. I know I had asked you that I wanted to hear the services that they were providing. So thank you for bringing her on. And thank you, Alyssa, for all the services you're providing.
Thank you. At this moment, we are moving on to public communications. So I will move to open public communication. And then city clerk, is there anybody that can speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have three speakers. The first one is going to be Mr. John Rios. You're with me here?
To place this call, you will.
Hold on one second.
Hello.
Hi, is this John Rios?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Hi, this is City Clerk Marlene Garcia calling you. You asked to speak during public communications?
Yes.
Okay, your three minutes start now.
One translator.
The translator will be translating as you speak.
The last week, the last meeting that they were supposed to, they did it. That's why I'm asking for a translator, because the last meeting you had, the translator didn't have the opportunity.
He is on the call and, and as I understand, he is or will be translating.
Well, last, last meeting, he wasn't.
So...
You know.
Is the translator on, available to speak? Mark?
As it is online, he is in the Spanish channel too. So when...
I am currently interpreting simultaneously as the gentleman is addressing everyone else. But he's not receiving my interpretation through the same channel. But the people who need the interpreting are receiving the interpretation through a different channel. So we have been broadcasting all along and we did broadcast simultaneously the same way last week or last time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, your minute, your three minutes start now.
Okay. One of the things I want to talk about is that last meeting, the council were talking about the cars being on the driveways and stuff like that because of the street sweeper. One of the things that the city council and the mayor should go outside into the community because I, I was at the ninety-nine cent store and they had the taquero right there at the sidewalk. A gentleman that has his wheelchair, electrical, had to go into the street because they were blocking the whole thing, okay? Then we have another one over here on CBS on Francisco and Puente, same thing. Then, over the weekend, there were taquero right there at the parking lot for Target. The people from Target are having their employees park their cars right there because they don't like it, for one thing. In the past eight months, the city council has done more damage than what Losano did for twenty years. The publicity right now for the city council, you guys shouldn't be right there where you're at. You guys have to open your eyes up and reach out to the community. And thank you, the CEO, for picking up all the trash that I've been calling in for, okay? But other than that, the city council is not doing their job. You guys have opened up, the only one that's really depending, that we can depend on, is Councilman Garcia. She's the only one that brings up, why are we doing this? One of the council, they want to give them money, the other council, oh, poor them. You know how much they're trading? Especially in the weekends, fifteen to two thousand dollars a night. What happened to all the, we're supposed to support our small businesses? And we're not. On the contrary, we're pushing them out of the city. So put your minds together, it's already been eight months with this crap. It's time for you guys to open your eyes up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next speaker is Catherine Lozier from our local library.
Hello?
Hi, is this our librarian, Catherine Lozier?
Yes, it is.
Hi, this is City Clerk Marlene Garcia. You asked to speak in, during public communications?
Yes.
Okay, your three minutes start now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pretend, Councilmembers, Committee Partners and fellow community members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. With taxes and honor upon us, the library has begun to receive tax forms. At present, we just have the California five forty easy, but more forms will be arriving shortly. And if there is a specific tax form that is needed, customers can print up to ten free pages each day and staff members are on, on site that can help you retrieve forms. And then through our reference services, both in person and by phone, we can assist customers in locating programs that offer free basic tax return preparations to qualified individuals, such as people over sixty years of age, people who generally make less than fifty-eight thousand dollars a year, and people with differing abilities. And February, we have some very special virtual programming. As mentioned earlier in the council session, we, February is African American and Black History Month. And it's a time to recognize, celebrate and honor the rich and diverse history and important contributions and achievements of Black and African Americans. And at the LA County Library, we are celebrating all month long with virtual programs for all ages, including a very special poetry appreciation program for teens, which will take place on Wednesday, February twenty-third at four P M., which will highlight a few notable Ameri- African American and Black poets. A virtual storytime for children will take place on February sixteenth at four P M. On African and African American tales for children with professional storyteller Michael D. McCarty. And we have art activities for all ages. And then we have a new program series called Educational Options. And the first event will take place on Tuesday, February eighth, from six to seven P M. Now, with this program series, we will be taking a look at high schools, specialty high schools and programs that have a special focus or a special admissions process. And the program taking place on February eighth will be learning about LA County's first public college, college prep boarding school called SEED, which is S E E D L A. And this is a school that focuses on career readiness in transportation, infrastructure, steam and humanities. And this is at no cost to the community. This program is going to be for parents and caregivers. And then I also just wanted to take a moment and per the very generous offer made by Councilmember Hernandez at the last session, the LA County Library will be offering a spring reading program. More, we'll come on that a little later. And I'm still in the information gathering stage for options for Baldwin Park specific programming, but I will definitely get back to you on more information with that. So I just wanted to thank you all so much. And if you have any questions, give us a call or stop by the Baldwin Park Library. Thank you so much, wonderfully.
Thank you so much. Okay, next speaker is going to be Greg Tuttle.
Hello?
Good evening, is this Greg Tuttle?
Yes, it is.
Hi, this is City Clerk Marlene Garcia. You asked to speak during public communications this evening?
Yes.
Okay, your three minutes start now.
Okay. First of all, I heard your special meeting about raising property, raising sales tax. It's never worked in this city. And one of the reasons it never works is because you put it in the general fund, you don't get specific with it, it gets co-mingled in. And then all we do is start paying all the top end people more money for their, their pay. This won't work in this city. The people can't afford more taxes. And also, you guys are sitting there handcuffing all the landlords by saying you can't raise rents and you can't force people out because of rent. Now, how are you going to collect more taxes? Now, getting on to Robert Tuforia, the most corrupt city attorney that the Baldwin Park city has ever had. You guys are a laughing joke of all the cities still allowing him to operate. He's cost the city millions of dollars in his incompetent weed tax, the weed contracts that he made up. He's been convicted of a, he was sanctioned for fraud in one court case. He's also had a five hundred, five hundred thousand dollar lien on IRS. He had to sell his house to pay off. This guy's corrupt and you guys still got him operating in your city. And we all know why. Monica Garcia used him for campaign manager and fundraiser. Hernandez got a big donation, so did Avila. Well, come this election, we got two people running, a woman and a man, Hernandez and Avila. If you plan on getting elected again, you better start voting and getting this guy out of office now. Because we're going to tell everybody you got money from him. And it's dirty money, it's not clean money. Also, we go into the code enforcement. We have a parking enforcement person that goes around and selectively writes tickets to people she doesn't like. And then when moral coaches trucks are parked out where there are illegally during the sweeper day, she doesn't write them up. This is gonna be addressed more towards the council meetings when we can come back in. And the police chief has already been informed on this and I'm informing the city council on this. This stuff has got to stop. She is selectively picketing people. She did one of my workers and she didn't even put it on the window. She sent it in the mail after she said she wasn't even gonna write it. I can't believe that the police department can't correct these things and get them done. The chief says, well, I don't do day-to-day stuff. Well, he better start doing day-to-day because he's gonna find out his people aren't doing the job. Now then, we got the vendors that are working right now and you guys still haven't made a decision. The decision is simple, you already have the law there. And it says that you can prosecute them for no license and no house permits.
Sorry.
And are not donating anything to the city.
Sorry, Mr. Tuttle, your time is up, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, those are all the callers for tonight.
Great, thank you for that, city clerk. So at this moment, I will move to public communications. You know, I think the only one that we're talking about is the street vendors, it is in the works. I know that we have been working on it. I actually just took a tour of a potential site with all of city staff to get them going. But I think that at this point, with all of those things in the works, it is, I would, I would want Ben, Ben to get the code enforcement to start handing out the warnings and letting people know that the laws are gonna start getting enforced again. And then they had a fair, a fair amount of time to either find a way to get permitted or try to work with a private, a private property owner where they could be, where they, it would be easier for them to access the license. And I know that a staff is working on that. And then Sam, do you have an estimate of when you can expect an approval for, for a decision on the, on the land use?
Not yet, Mayor, we, we're, we can look at it and then I can get back to you.
Great, thank you for that.
So Mayor, really quick?
Yes.
Just asking, so you're giving direction to go ahead and start enforcing the, the code that we already have in place until we finalize the new code, correct?
I would like for city, for the code, for code enforcement to go out there and start giving out a warning to everybody and letting them know what's gonna happen and that this is gonna get enforced again.
Okay, and what is the timeline you're giving them?
So I think we should be able to, so we're looking at bringing in a event. Manny, did you say April or May?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we had mentioned the end of April, sometime in May. Ben, does, do you have a specific date? I know we had talked about it.
Timeframe?
Yes.
So Mayor, based on that, that is too far off. There's been a lot of issues with the vendors on the sidewalks. And as someone mentioned, we have cars blocking sidewalks during sweeper day and because they need to block the sidewalks because there's nowhere else for park, for parking. But we have vendors blocking sidewalks, we have vendors in residential areas, we have truck vendors, which is originally all these people on our code, they're not allowed to be in the city of Baldwin Park. I feel that we should, we should continue to enforce what we already have in place because the new ordinance is still being reviewed, it's still being worked on. But in the meantime, we need to enforce the code that we have in place so that the sidewalk vendors are not there, the trucks are not in our city, parking on our city streets, selling food. Because it has created a big problem in our city. We should follow the vending code that we have at this time, the mobile vendors that were allowed as long as they have their permits, as long as they have the license and city permits. I would like to recommend that our code enforcement started enforcing, start with a warning and let them know that they are not allowed to be vending in our city, that we do not allow that kind of vending. And I know we are working on providing maybe a couple of days out of the month to come and vent into our city in a specific zone. And they are, we're also going to work with them so that they can work their, get their licenses, whether it's their health or their city permits. But in the city, I think we need to start enforcing the code that we have at this time because it is out of control.
So, yeah, sorry, so real quick, yes, so that's what we're saying, but the first one has to be a warning. So give them a warning first, this gives them the chance. And then second one, it could be an enforcement, that's what you want to do. And then we also need to collect their information to have them, to be able to, to be able to work with them on, on the, on the future event in April. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with that, I agree, I agree with giving them for a warning. But I would ask that we give them a two weeks warning for our staff to go out there and do this work over the la- over the next two weeks. That should be sufficient amount of time for us to go out there and provide this information to them. And then at that point, you know, then we could, you know, then they've had, then they've been duly noted with the opportunities that they could also, that we're working on with them in the future for future events and so forth. So, you know, and I think that will resolve quite a bit. But if we just, if we don't give a timeframe, I think that's gonna add a little bit more ambiguity at this time. So I would say if, you know, if we just say two weeks, you know, as of today, to give staff to, you know, go out there and we'll, you know, again, it's at, we're requesting staff to do this within, you know, ideally within a week or so. And then catch, you know, catch any other, you know, the ones that we missed on the first and the second week. At that point, then we could just kind of move forward at that, as, as both council member and the mayor spoke. Thank you.
And so I do know that there will have to be enforcement throughout the weekend and later at night. So I want to make sure that those schedules do get evenly distributed amongst all code enforcement employees so that there's not only one employee having to take toll of a whole different schedule change.
Right, so that has to be worked on so that they can start enforcing, correct?
Mayor, council members, we, we were programming a refresher of the, of the ordinance that's currently in effect. If you may recall from the discussion in the last meeting of December, December sixteenth, in which we went over some of the options, including the special event program that we're going to be undertaking now. If it's of interest to the council, we can do a refresher of the ordinance in the, in the study session next council meeting. Just so that you get a refresher on what currently is in the books that will be enforced after the warning. If there's any interest, we can do that in the next council meeting. If not, then we just proceed with the warnings.
Well, that gives them the two weeks, like Councilmember Hernandez said, to start giving them the information on what's coming ahead. So by the time that starts, the actual two weeks go by where they get the information that we are, we are going to start implementing the ordinance and we have that session to go over it. Our code enforcement should be very well versed on what our ordinance is so that they know what they need to do.
Okay.
Thank you for that. And I will say, you know, we keep hearing these things that we don't support local businesses and I don't think that's true at all, you know, and, you know, some people politicize it, some people believe it. But the truth is that that's not the case. This year, we've, we've, we've supported the businesses more than ever. We've allocated over a hundred thou- I believe over a hundred thousand dollars just for, out of A R P funds to help these local businesses. We're helping them subsidize their advertisements. We've, we had a grant for three thousand dollars to help them and support them in their outdoor dining efforts. And we've, and we've given... And we've, and we've given them a lot of attention on social media, making sure that people are aware of this. So, you know, we keep hearing this thing. This is not true, you know, and the politics need to stop. If people really support local businesses, they need to go out there and support them. Uh, and that goes for everybody, you know, and so I just wanted to bring that out there. We keep hearing that and that's just completely not true. It's not them versus us. It's not them or us. It's everybody and everybody can get, and everybody can move forward together. So I wanna make that clear.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
I just wanna say that I'm glad we're moving in this direction of, um. Going reverting back to the ordinance that we had and then refining it as, as is appropriate. But for the sake of public health and for regulation. I think that it is necessary for us to, you know, continue to regulate this activity in a way that makes sense for our community. It's fine that we're, you know, reconsidering some aspects of the ordinance. But meanwhile, you know, it shouldn't be kind of like a free for all. And, um, I feel like that's where the frustration has come from. From businesses and other stakeholders. Um, so I'm glad to see that we will be regulating this once again, um, per the ordinance that was on the books and also the county. You know, kind of what, what they have, um, their law. Uh, you know, because that's really important for public health and there's a reason why they have that. And I don't wanna go belabor that point. But, um, you know, I'm just glad to see that we're moving in this direction because, uh. You know, I think that some of the concerns that have been expressed are very valid. And, uh, from businesses and others alike. So just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So moving on to the consent calendar. Yes, before April ten.
Yeah, before we go to consent calendar, I just wanted to, uh, close on behalf of Florencio Rebollar Sanchez, who passed away on January tenth. I wanna send my condolences out to Veronica Lopez and the, uh, Sanchez family. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. And of course, as a council and as a city, we wanna send our condolences to them as well. And hope that they, uh, are able to find the support they need to get through this hard time.
Here, I also wanna send my condolences, um, to Veronica and her family. It was very sad to hear the news, uh, I didn't hear two weeks later. So my condolences Veronica to you and your family.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Avila. So at this moment, we will move to our consent calendar and, uh, we don't have much. So we have items one through six. Is there any council member looking to pull an item?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to pull item number four.
Great. Okay. Is there any other items?
I have some questions on item number five.
Okay, four or five.
Items number five and, and six are reports of officers.
Oh, sorry about that. You're right, city clerk. So it's item one through four.
Oh, that's right. You're right. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to pass consent and counter items number one through three, excluding item number four. Can I get a second?
Second.
City clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Damian.
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Avila.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that. Uh, Mayor Protem, you have the floor on item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and this is, uh, I've got a couple of questions regarding the staff report. This is to Ben. So I was reviewing the staff report and the introduction, uh, provided by Lorraine Mendez. When you say, uh, other HUD programs administered tasks. So in the scope of services that you want to provide, it says item number four. Other HUD program administration tasks, including but not limited to assistance with HUD monitoring response twenty one and twenty two caper. And then also says, but not limited to the assistance, et cetera. What is it? What is, what are you exactly referring to? What services are you looking, uh, for Lorraine Mendez to provide?
Thank you, council member. So the, the exact services are as follows. First, we would put together, she'd help us, uh, put together a substantial amendment. Which is like a, a plan document for, for CARESAC funding. She would help us with this very exhaustive plan for the home funding we got through the ARP, American Rescue Plan. And she's the only consultant that I know of that has put together such a plan. We're gonna be able to use hopefully some of that home ARP money for the Garvey site. But that we have to do this, this huge plan, um, required by HUD before we can spend any money. Then the annual action plan, that's next. That's the normal budget we do every year. We call that the annual action plan. And then beyond those items. We usually hire a consultant to do that caper document. That's a little later in the year. Uh, usually done around July, August and September. And also we went through, we just went through a HUD monitoring. This doesn't happen. I don't think it's happened to our city, in our city for about, about five or seven years. And, uh, we have a, a response that we have to make to that monitoring. Some of it is very specialized. So we just might, uh, we've been talking to her. We might need just a little bit of assistance as we put together our response. That's, um. Finance Department and, and the Housing Division. And that is, I think that's it unless I miss something, Carol, but I think that's it.
So when you said, we're going through the HUD monitoring response, what, what type of response are we talking about? Are we, did HUD send us a letter? Telling us that something's not right or, or what's, what's exactly the response or the monitoring?
Um, yes, let me, let me start to respond that, to that. And then Carol, who is intimately familiar with that, that HUD letter. Can maybe further respond, but let me just generally say that, um, this HUD monitoring, these are. They call them monitoring. So all cities get monitored. You don't have a choice, so to speak. It just happens every, you know, five to 10 years. In my experience, it happens in that range. And what they do is they look at all programmatic, uh, uh, issues with the program. They look at, uh, our accounting. They look at. Do we meet all the requirements? Related to expenditures, related to program requirements, reporting and so forth. I've worked for, you know, again, probably more than a dozen cities. No one ever passes a HUD monitoring. With flying colors, there's always some issues or concerns or findings and, and Carol. Maybe could explain some of those, but we did have some, so we need, now need to respond to them. They give us ample time to respond to them. And then once we respond to them in a sufficient manner, they, they essentially sent us another letter saying, thank you. We appreciate your response and then we just move forward.
So can you explain to us what caper, what is caper? What, what type of report is that?
So the caper is the consolidated annual performance evaluation report. It is a report that's due every fall to HUD. And it is a financial report of all of our CDBG and home expenditures to HUD. It's done on a software program and, um, it's, uh, you know, basically a financial report. Telling them everything we spent and then it also documents all of the accomplishments. You know, we've served these many meals or we've helped as many families, whatever the case may be. So it's a, it's a detailed report due every year.
So from my recollection and, and a council that been here longer than I have can probably, uh, speak to this. When we had a former housing manager here, uh, Suzie Relas. I believe she handled all of these tasks and all of these annual reports and all of the CDBG. And how she presented that to the council and where the council decided how much of that was gonna go to each. You know, either St. John's Church of the Redeemer. So why is it that we're having to hire a consultant to do something that normally the housing manager would do?
I think my response to that would be, I, yes, you're from, you're right. In some cases, the, uh, to my recollection, the, the previous manager did do some of these reports in-house. Uh, meaning we didn't hire a consultant. Right now, we're in a situation in the housing division where we've had, um, numerous, uh, staff that have been out. We have. One of our main housing staff persons that would, you know, help the entire division. They've been out on maternity leave for. Six months and they'll be out another three more months. We, Carol has, uh, in short, I'm just giving you a short answer. Carol has taken on. A larger role in the amount of work she does, emergency housing vouchers, project based vouchers. The amount of work that Carol is doing as the head of the division, I don't wanna say it's double, but it's, it's, it's a large, it's a. She's doing an extensive amount of work, uh, in addition to what used to happen, um, let's say before. You know, the, the three years that I've been here and, and where the previous manager, uh, housing manager was here. So we're in a situation where we don't like to use consultants only if we have to. Um, and in this case, you know, with this, with everything that's happening. CARESAC money and home ARP are new funding sources. We're, we're happy to receive the money. We can help people with the money, but they're all new allocations. Uh, and they come with requirements that we don't have, uh, enough staff to, to handle all this new work. So it's really a good idea to hire a specialized consultant that can handle these things. And then allows Carol and her staff, those that are with us to, to handle, I'll just say generally the day to day duties. So. Um, we try to use that, this consultant wisely. She's a very good consultant. We've used her in the past. And, you know, that's my best response to tell you that we, we really feel we need, uh, her assistance.
Yeah, no, and I, I have no issues with Lorraine, uh, Mendez. I don't, I don't know her. I don't, I read her qualifications. She seems to be very well qualified. So what, in a sense, what you're saying is basically it's, we just don't have the manpower to do our day to day operations that need to be done. So let me ask you something, Ben. Have the reports been filed for the capital grant revenue? Have you guys filed the environmental reports for that?
I think you're referring to those, we, we had talked about those a few months ago. Carol, I think we did. Carol, did, can you confirm that?
Yes, all the environmental re- reviews have been submitted to HUD. The funding has been, um, in our E-log system. It, we have to submit the environmental reviews when we identify the activities that we are going to do. So in order to receive the funding, it is not a requirement to, uh, submit the environmental review. Just when we identify the activities.
Got it. So when we spoke, so when we spoke about this about three to four months ago, when I questioned why there was zeros for the last three years. Twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty one, those reports, Carol, you're now saying that they have, you actually logged into the IDIS system? And filed for these reports for all three years?
Yes, we, we do it in the HERO system. That's where we file all the environmental reviews.
Got it.
So, sorry, Councilman, Member Damian. So you are up to date with all those reports that are filed? Because like, uh, Councilmember Damian said, we were at zero because those reports have not been filed.
No, we were, we were, we were, we shouldn't be at zero because the funding was available in the E-log system. So if you pull the information of all the funding that comes to the city, you can see that the funds for the three years were there. The environmental reviews have to be filed once we identify the activities where we are going to invest the money that we receive. So, but that has been done because we have identified, um, the activities, uh, that we're gonna be doing at the public housing, uh, project that we have.
But last, last time we discussed this, the money was not in that account and you explained was because, explanation was because. The reports have not been filed. Is the money in the account, in our accounts now?
Yes.
As of when?
It has been there since they, since HUD allocated the funding.
Since when? I'm sorry?
Since HUD, um, uh, allocated the funding.
Which was when?
Every year we have to submit some reports in order to receive the funding, uh, the annual funding. So all the reports for the annual funding were submitted. I don't know what happened, why in, in our budget it was showing at zero. But, um, but the reports that we initially have to submit to HUD in order to receive the funding. Was done on time and the funding was in the system.
So now this is a question for Rose. Is that money in our funding rooms? I'm sorry, Councilmember Damian, I know you're the one that had questions.
No, it's okay.
Hi, uh, council member and mayor. Uh, as far as, uh, today, we haven't received the money in our checking. That's what I have seen so far.
I'm sorry, Rose. Can you, can you repeat that? You said we have not or we have?
We have not received the money hitting our checking account, uh, for the years you mentioned.
Okay. And, and, and so this is where, this is where, this is one of the reasons why. I'm confused because I get, you know, I get different answers. So when we met three to four months ago. The explanation given to myself and Councilmember Avila was. That these reports, that we did have the money. Then it came out when Ron from finance indicated that we did not have it because you, in order for us to have that money. We need to file the environmental reports. When we asked the question as to why these environmental reports were not filed for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. The answer from Carol was, I did not have access to the IDIS system. I did not have logins. And this was three to four months ago. And my concern was, why are we discussing that we don't have logins for this system? To be able to apply for these funds three years later? Why is it taking three years to get logins for this? So here we are getting an answer from our finance director saying that we don't have this money. But Carol, you're indicating that we do have it. So again, do we have this money and have these reports been filed? Or do we not have this money and these reports have not been filed?
Okay, so let me, let me explain how it works. So there is a specific reports that we have to submit to HUD in order to get the annual allocation. Um, once we identify the activities, we have to, we have to submit the environmental review. And then once we utilize the money, we have to submit all the invoices and, and do a drill down from the account. So the account, the accounts from the federal system called E-logs is showing that they, the money is there. But it is not in our city account because the city account, because we haven't requested reimbursements yet. We have been, um, doing some projects right now at the public housing. So we're gonna be submitting some reimbursements.
Got it. So, so what you're saying, Carol, is that we have not submitted the reports for reimbursement? And are these the reports that we're talking about, the environmental reports that have not been filed for the last three years?
No, those are two different things. In order to utilize any federal funding from HUD, you have to file an environmental review. Then once you, you do the environmental review based on the activities that you will be doing with this funding. Then you can utilize the funding for the activities which we have been doing recently. So then once we have paid the invoices, then the city can request the reimbursement for the fund.
No, please Enrique, I'll follow up for you.
Yes, uh, it's a two-step process. Councilmember Damian, uh, uh, as I understand it, is that first we have to get approval. For the proposed expenditures and proposed investments. They give us the approval upon which we then do the environmental, uh, documentation. We go ahead and, and then carry out the activities with front funding or some other funds that we have at our, our avail. Once we conclude the programming and the activities, we then submit for reimbursement. So the, the money that eventually, eventually will come, which has been pre-approved, will not get into our coffers. With our finance department until their reimbursement has been paid.
And is this supposed to be done on a yearly basis, Enrique? Because it had not been done for three years.
The reimbursement.
Hernandez, I know you were next. Sorry.
No, please answer the question Enrique for her, then I'll jump in next.
Yeah, yeah. So, so i- i- in going back to the, the two previous years that whether we had done any environmental. Preparation and carried out any activities. So, uh, the answer to that then Carol is that we had not submitted for reimbursement over the last two years.
No, because the, because we're just utilizing the funding to do some, uh, improvements and maintenance, um. Uh, no, because the, because we're just utilizing the funding to do some uh improvements and maintenance um at the uh public housing.
McNeil, McNeil.
McNeil, yes.
So we had not submitted for reimbursements?
No, um, we have been doing some work recently and so um we are paying the invoices right now. And then after the invoices are paid, then we submit for reimbursement.
Perfect. Enrique, you've you answered uh a lot of my questions that I had. Uh, thank you.
I just have one more thing. Um, under the section one introduction that Lorraine Mendez provided under the four items that she's gonna be providing services for, it states it is also understood that Baldwin Park currently has staff assigned full time to the management and administration of these programs. Nonetheless, they desire to contract with a competent consultant or firm to prepare the documents for them. To me, if I, when I'm reading this, it just tell, it tells me that we have full time staff, management and administration that is able to handle this. Nonetheless, we desire, and I guess the keyword here is desire, to contract out for a consultant. Um, I I, you know, to be honest with you, I have a lot of, a lot of uh concerns with this, and I think it's something more to discuss in closed session other than open session. For me, I I I will not support this. I will not support this item.
Uh, Mayor Protem, uh Damian, um, do you feel just, do you think we should just table this at this recommendation and then bring it back in two weeks after we have uh further conversation or details?
I believe so, because I think some of the things that I would like to say, I don't want to say in open session. So I think that uh this is something that we should just table, bring back. Uh, I need to get more clarification as to what's what's going on here. I'm not confident passing this through, so my motion would be to just table it, bring it back.
Thank you. I would second that. I I'll just add, if if you don't mind, to your friendly uh motion is if uh if Ben, if you can just provide us uh just an over, a a quick memo in regards to the uh the uh the workload that your staff is having uh to really justify, you know, this type of work uh for a consultant. Um, I think that'll just provide a little bit more clarity for all of us. Um, because uh Mayor Protem, uh, you know, certainly highlighted some um some good points. Um, but I'm sure you you can certainly uh respond or answer to those um in the in the next couple of weeks.
Yes, thank you. We'll do that.
Great. So there is a motion on the floor. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Abila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that. And at this moment, we will move to report to officers. Uh, Councilmember Abila, I believe you had a question on item number five.
Yes, um, Sam, Sam is here, right? Okay.
Yes, I'm here.
Um, so this item is, you did a report, uh, a session, a study session to make sure that, you can better explain that this than me. Um, the speed limit to make sure it's a proper state uh speed limit according to the state of California. Can you explain to me why you you did this assessment? And and what is the outcome of that assessment that you did in those areas, please?
Absolutely. Um, thank you, um, Councilmember Abila. So i- in brief, uh, posted limits in city streets are regulated by the California Vehicle Code and other uh state requirements. And so in order to have speed limits that are appropriate and legally defensible, uh, the state requires that we conduct a speed study um every five years. And so a speed limit change is only considered uh in the eighty fifth percentile of the measured uh speeds um that are different from what is posted now. And that's so that um, you know, our law enforcement can justify uh enforcing that speed limit. If the wrong speed limit is posted based on the study, then it's not enforceable. So we only look at those streets that are like within a a difference of five miles uh per hour between what's uh posted and what the new study says. And we consider those those um locations in terms of uh historical speed limits, uh current land use, uh adjacent speed limit uh segments, uh street geometry, uh and accident history. So we can rule out uh a lot of uh the change. We can justify not increasing or decreasing speed limits. And we can justify uh that, you know, we'll we'll, we maintain that limit. Now, in this study, uh, we we studied forty eight roadway segments and out of the, out of, sorry, fifty eight. And out of the fifty eight, uh, forty nine uh have adequate speed limits and we were able to justify. So there's no change on forty nine. There's nine locations that, you know, uh, we are recommending for a change of uh five miles per hour, seven increasing the mile per hour uh from, you know, certain, from thirty to thirty five or thirty five, forty in certain location. And there are two where um the speed limit that's gonna be posted, there are two that are coming now. So um, because the uh the state um is required for us to do this and 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 put it in our municipal code, uh, you know, those speed limits, they're not just posted out in the streets. They have to be in the municipal code in order to be enforceable. I I have uh, I have John Bache and the engineers that performed the study uh online. So if you had any technical questions for them, then they'll be happy to answer it.
So this study was done in May of last year, correct?
That's correct.
So thinking of what's happened the last few years, May of last year, uh, we didn't have the traffic that that we have now because we have all of our students back in session. We have most of our district employees back in session. So I would think that that study would not have turned out the way it did had it been now. Because, you know, because you work for Public Works and you're constantly out there. And traffic has increased quite a bit out there. And so I'm concerned for the areas like Olive to Los Angeles. We have Holland Middle School in that area. We have Olive School. Then we have Walnut on the Side Street. The, the violent, the sub limits to Merced Avenue from Violent Avenue. What exactly is that section right there? From where to where? I'm looking at the report. It says, while city limits to Merced Avenue and location, it says violent. That area, if I'm thinking about the area where Jones Junior High School is, that is a crazy area in the morning and in the afternoon. It's it's impossible to get through. I, and you guys have done many studies on um right there, right by by Jones Junior High School, and there's quite a few accidents. So there's those areas where we have schools that I feel that our report would have come out different had it been done at a different time.
Right. I'll let um, I'll I'll let the the engineers uh talk more to it. But um, so we know that traffic um conditions and traffic patterns change over time. And yes, uh, while uh this last two years has been a unprecedented, you know, time and traffic did change. Um, I think that's why we're required to do it every five years. It just so happened to land during the middle of the pandemic. Um, but at the end of the day, what we're looking at is we're looking at that eighty fifth percentile of people who are traveling on the road. So that, that um helps out to eliminate the peak period uh of traffic. So we don't consider those as part of the speed study. These, a- and and the reason that's done is that so that, you know, when you're doing it every five years, you're sort of kinda hitting that uh mean range in terms of the eighty fifth percentile. And uh they tend to change only within that five mile an hour limit. Uh, and so I I'll have John or uh Farzad and Amir, are you guys uh available? Maybe you can explain that a little further.
Yes.
I'm.
Oh, Amir, would you like to uh start?
Oh, would you like me to go ahead?
Yes, but.
Sure. Uh, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, to answer the questions, why uh these uh speed uh limits or speed uh eighty five percenters are correct? Uh, because they are mostly, I mean, all of them are uh recorded. At the time, there is no uh peak rush, uh peak or rush hour. Means has to be free travel for the uh drivers and the vehicles. So the engineer would uh take the speed by the radar gun. And normally they do them at a time between uh ten o'clock, nine thirty in the morning to eleven thirty or maybe uh around uh two o'clock in the afternoon. When the traffic is very low, but the speed is free flow, means everyone goes at the speed they feel comfortable. The speeds are, as uh Sam uh clearly uh explained, uh, the speed limits are established at or near the eighty five percentile of the speed. And eighty five percent means eighty fifth, uh eighty five percent of the uh motorists travel at or below that. And at the time that in the morning, around ten o'clock in the morning, even though if the school is in session, a school is open or closed, it really is relevant because at that time there is no uh travel to a school, there's no students. Uh, so that uh sort of uh, uh, it it is uh taking care of that uh concern. Uh, and and if you look at those uh segments that you were concerned, uh, Councilwoman, uh, it's uh the speed, the eighty five percentile was higher. Say if Olive, the eighty five percentile for one area came thirty nine miles per hour. And the California Vehicle Code allows us to look at the conditions of the roadway and geometric. And if there is any condition which is not apparent to the drivers, which allow the engineer to justify that eighty five percentiles only by five miles. And so thirty mi- uh, if the speed was eighty five percent, uh, speed was thirty nine, uh, you have to round it up or down to nearest five increment. In that case was forty. So we use the judgment being near the schools, having uncontrolled crosswalk uh and geometric which dictated and made us to lower the speed five miles. So instead of being forty miles per hour, we justify it to o- uh only increase to thirty five from thirty. And that's pretty much uh the logic behind that for uh the two other segments.
Councilmember, if I may, I also add, uh, the C V Z uh also establish school zones. Uh, so any school zone area, uh, no matter what the speed limit is, whether it's thirty, thirty five or forty miles per hour, uh, it limits it to twenty five miles per hour within the school zones. Uh, when children are present in route to and from school. So safe route to school, basically, uh, not just immediate uh streets that's next to the school. It could be a few blocks out.
So are we gonna have those postings all over those areas that
Absolutely.
twenty five speed limit zone is still what they need to keep while around the school zone areas? Because five miles an hour is very concerning and I understand you did the study while school was not in session. But when, when it comes to being in session, I can already hear somebody say, well, the speed limit is at thirty five and here we have an accident uh because that person was going thirty five, although they know they should go twenty five miles an hour or slower when they know there's children there. It's just, to me, it might not seem to you a lot, five miles. And I understand that if we don't post the correct uh speed limit, our police officers won't be able to use their their speed guns to be able to sight whoever's driving over the speed limit. It it's still concerning. It's still concerning, even though it's not exactly in the school zone areas. But I wanted you to explain uh the reason why you had to increase this and it's something that the state is requiring, correct?
That is correct.
Sam, if you don't mind, um, are are you done, Councilmember Abila?
Yes, go ahead for now.
Thank you. Um, just out of curiosity, when the engineers go out and do the study, is it just one time and point? Or is it multiple times on that same block, you know, over a course of a a week or two minutes? Can can you share with that, what that looks like?
No, no. Amir? Oh, go ahead, Amir.
Yes, uh, every time for each segment, uh, the engineer goes out and take it's uh, it's normally one day. But the day which is uh, it's not going to be Monday, it's not going to be Friday. It's going to be middle of the week uh as a normal conditions. And uh just take uh as uh many as uh maybe hundred uh samples of the motorists. And it's, to answer your question, is uh normally one day. But if the, that day is cloudy, if you're not going to take it, if it's too hot uh or uh uh raining, we are not going to uh take it so away. So it has to be a normal condition to take that survey.
Now, I appreciate that because uh, and what about uh the the length, the width of the street um also? Uh, because again, uh, you know, we've had some concerns, as you know, Sam, uh, you know, along Merced from Los Angeles, you know, over to Pacific or Baldwin Park, um, as speeding has, you know, gone, has been going on. And basically, we're increasing the speed up to, you know, up to forty miles an hour just north of that. Um, is, you know, is that something that we can re-study um now to see if, you know, if our, if our uh, if our ratings are still the same, um, can we, can we do this once again? Because again, those very large streets, at least the the one on Merced, uh, you know, I, it's, it's probably six car, six cars or so. I mean, it's quite a bit, it's pretty wide. Um, and again, you know, without having traffic furniture or anything like that, uh, you know, people will speed at the, you know, when there's no cars, they're gonna speed much, much, much quicker. So my thing is, you know, if you're doing the eighty five percentile, um, you know, the, and the traffic speeds and the uh much uh might be much higher than what they normally would be. Uh, if it's, you know, during uh, you know, during the school time or other school time, other times. Um, and because we're not factoring that in, uh, that may, that perhaps may skew or may give us a different uh look if we do it later days and so forth. And just out of curiosity, why don't we do it on Mondays and Fridays?
Amir, do you want to pick that or do you want me to?
Is that a standard uh practice or is that us choosing not to do that?
Well, it is a standard practice. I mean, engineers, traffic engineers uh pick the normal days. Uh, as I said, uh, normal conditions uh to go out. And normally Mondays and Fridays are not normal, uh, uh, because there are less traffic definitely on uh uh Fridays. And as some uh areas, um, Mondays would be uh pretty close to that to Monday or to Fridays. So for that reason, we picked, we tried to pick the uh pre uh standard, uh, normal uh condition for that uh segment of the roadway.
Thank you. Um, I'll let my other council members uh chime in if they have any other questions.
Great. So is there any other questions or concerns?
So uh, just to um recap, is the direction to um go back and revisit some of these locations and do a, do another study? I I I would, I would warn that just, just as we can get um, you know, a different result based on 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 the day. Um, and uh, it could potentially uh go the other way where, you know, we're doing now that there's more traffic and we're analyzing it. It could say, oh, we need to go another, you know, five miles. So it could, it could go both ways. What Amir was trying to uh get at is that we're, when when we do this study, we're trying to, and the reason why we do it in the middle of the week, we're we're trying to get that optimum uh uh time where it's uh mundane, regular day, free flow, free flow traffic and to try to model it after a a a certain day like that. But if the direction is to go back and uh revisit some of these locations, um, John, I think that is uh acceptable. We can, we can do that, correct?
Absolutely. Um, so um, if I would propose, um, if this passed, we can go back and and on a separate street by street cases, we do separate studies for it. Uh, so we can do that or we can uh pause on this and do the study and come back as a collective uh citywide report.
And John, what happens if you were to go like safe, uh, for, uh, at least for myself would be would be San Francisco and Merced Avenue, the ones that would go from thirty five to forty? What would happen if the, you say the numbers would go skew them differently? Would it be like forty five miles an hour?
Usually, it wouldn't go too much off, but we might not get the same results. My, my expectations to receive, or, you know, the eighty fifth percent will be similar to the first one that we did, and not to be too far off.
So could we? Would it be, is it an issue on your side if we were to take out and ask for you to go back and do the, you know, the selective streets? At least for myself, and I don't know, the other council members have other streets, would be San Francisco and Merced. Out of this report, for the time being, while we go do a secondary study, and then we'll bring those streets back at a later time, once you're done. Would that, is that possible? Is that?
So it, it, it is, but I'd rather come back and do it all at once because they both, each time will require a modification to the municipal code. And so it's a lot cleaner, a lot easier to do that at one time. So it, it, we, we, we still have time. This is, this is the year that we have to do this. So we can pause it, go and revisit the locations that council wants us to re-look at, and, you know, come back with, you know, those streets.
And how long would that take, Sam?
So we can expedite it and, you know, come back maybe within three to four weeks.
So, like, Councilmember Hernandez said, that area he mentioned is a very good area. And anything that is in the surrounding school areas, like the Olive and Merced areas, all those areas that are usually busy with, with students. If we can do all those areas and the one council member Hernandez, I don't know if anybody else has other areas.
I just have more of a question for Sam. Sam, is this something that the traffic study, that is this conducted through our in-house staffing? Or is there any additional cost going back to revisit these streets?
That's a very good question. Thank you, Mayor Protem. So it, it is one of our in-house consultants, our bench, you know, it's, it's a firm that is on call for us. So we have accepted this study as complete. So we would need to go back and discuss it with them. I don't imagine it would be too costly to do so. But yeah, it would, it would definitely require us to do a change order to the original agreement.
And what's not too costly?
Well, without having to negotiate here with Farzad, you know, we can just, instead of going out to redo the study for fifty eight locations, we're only going to look at a select few, four locations. So it's hard to say, but I think that it won't be, you know, too costly. And I could come back to the council and once we have a change order and let you know.
And, and there's no dollar amount to safety of our community. So it would be worth it, I think.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, then like to make a motion?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Please add, add, add to this, Councilmember Avila, if I piss out on anything here, like to instruct staff to go back and look at the handful of streets such as Francisco Avenue, Merced Avenue. I believe the two Olive Streets that are listed here in the report to bring back an additional study, traffic study. And also, along with that, a cost associated in advance, perhaps in two weeks at our next council, or before, if you could just email us a memo on that, and to go back and do these studies for us.
And the, the South City Limits to Merced as well.
And that, that is my motion.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that, City Clerk. At this moment, we move on to item number six, and that is the introduction of an ordinance, number fourteen sixty eight, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, California, amending chapter fifty of the Baldwin Park Municipal Code and enacting a new section in chapter fifty, establishing mandatory organic waste disposal reduction requirements under Senate Bill thirteen eighty three related to short-lived climate pollutants. So Sam, I think this is another question for you, if I'm not mistaken. So this is just regarding the new law. And then do we have, are we planning on doing anything to make sure residents are aware? And then how we could potentially help them get on board with composting?
Absolutely, one hundred percent correct. So this ordinance gives us the enforcement mechanism. You know, for lack of a better word, gives us the teeth to, to be able to start doing that. But one major component of this ordinance is an outreach and education portion, which is a two-year period before, you know, the heavy enforcement and all of that starts. So it does, it does gives us that, that flexibility to start our outreach and education, you know, program. There's obviously other programs like, like, that are required, like a food recovery program, which we're partnering with the, with the CAG for region to join the region effort. And so, yes, the, the short answer is, is yes. We, lots of education and outreach.
Great. Okay. And then I don't know if any other council members have any questions or concerns? Great. If not, I'll make a motion to pass item number six. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
And Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that. Well, it is nine o'clock, and we've hit the end of our agenda. So I just have a couple of requests before we get to head out early today. So I did, I didn't want to talk about, you know, Earth Day is, I mean.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just want to verify with the City Clerk, was the title read for the ordinance?
No. No.
Yeah, so if we can just go back to that item and read by title only, ordinance fourteen sixty eight, for the record.
Okay. Councilmember Hernandez, would you like to do that?
Certainly, one second, I'll just bring it up real quick. Technology. All right. Introducing and first reading of ordinance number fourteen sixty eight, an ordinance of the City Council of, City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, California, amending chapter fifty of the Baldwin Park Municipal Code and enacting a special section in chapter fifty, establishing mandatory organic waste disposal reduction requirements under Senate Bill SB thirteen eighty three related to short-lived climate pollutants, SLCP.
Thank you.
Great. And then, or Sam, is that good, Sam? We're good?
Sam, do we need to take roll call or dinner?
I, I believe so. I would defer to Robert on whether we need to retake the vote.
Let's go ahead and do that, please. Thank you.
All right. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you. I'm sorry, was it Mayor Estrada, did you make the motion, or was it Councilmember Hernandez?
Yeah, I made the motion, and then Councilmember Hernandez.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that, City Clerk. Okay, for real, this time, we are at the end of our agenda. So before we leave, I did just want to make some requests. Earth Day is coming up, and I thought it would be a very neat idea to have a citywide cleanup. So this way, we can have people volunteer, we can plan something and help Public Works, who I know works very hard in our parks and recs, clean our parks, our streets, our areas. And then we can also potentially do some e-waste recycling and even paper shredding for residents who might have, who might be hoarding a lot of bills that they don't know how to dispose of properly. So I don't know if any other council members have any comments on this or opinions on, on doing something like this?
Good idea. Maybe we can invite the schools to participate. I know a lot of seniors need to put in volunteer hours for their college applications. So you could ask them.
Yeah. Then I think that's a good idea. I recently heard about that, that they have requirement for hours. So this is one way to help them reach that potential as well. That's a good idea, Councilmember Avila. And then a couple of weeks ago, I believe we gave direction to Manny and our staff to look into the potential of building a, a music room at the Morgan Park Community Center. And, and I know that you were also looking at redoing a lot of the other rooms because Y WCA is no longer occupying them. I did take a walk because that area is.
Not used.
Yeah, it's not in use. And it's also, I believe it's also, I think it was built in segments. So there's a lot of doors everywhere, and it takes up a lot of space. I think, you know, we can reach the goals that we want to do, expand our services at the, at Morgan Park and make better space of it, better use of the space. I'd like to direct our staff to look into getting a architect to help them redesign that area so that it's most suitable for the uses we're looking to use it for. Great. Is everybody okay with that?
Would you want to be a volunteer architect, Mayor?
Yes.
Are you, are you volunteering?
I mean, we, we can probably work with the high schools on their design program. You know, they, they have pre-architecture in the high schools. I think it would be a neat project with them, too.
Or the, or the college students that they can like, come home, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go. Okay, fine.
We'll leave it up.
Your final first?
Yeah. All right. Well, we'll leave it up to Enrique. But yeah, so, okay, good. Thank you. So I believe at this moment, we are ready to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. I'd like to just request one more item for, for staff. I'd like to formally request once again for the chief to provide us, you know, monthly or quarterly reports in and around the activities that are happening in our city and also activities happening within the department, non-personnel related. You know, there's a lot of great stuff that, that the department does in our community. And most of the time, it's showcased on our social media. We do have residents that do not use social media for one reason or another. And I like to take this opportunity for the chief to not only share, you know, what's happening in our city, but also what's happening as it relates to crime trends and so forth, and other opportunities that we can take during this time for the chief to give us at least once a month, ideally. Let's go with once a month, please. And if we think that we need to go extend them, you know, on a quarterly basis, we can do that at, at that time. But I'd like to have the chief provide a time in our agenda for him to do that on a monthly basis. Maybe at the first or the end, maybe at the first of the month. And that is my request. Thank you. And appreciate anybody's thoughts.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
To piggyback off of Councilmember Hernandez's comments, I'd like to request a follow-up conversation to our last closed session for the next meeting that is scheduled during closed session.
Very well.
Thank you.
And I believe at this moment, I don't know if any other council members have any questions, comments, or requests? If not, good. So good night, everybody. At this moment, I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? If not, motion is, meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks.
Record.